Meeting of the Carver Board of Selectmen on March 31, 2016. This is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media. Last week I gave the wrong web address. It's area58.net, not area58.com. So I apologize to those of you that have been out at area58.com and whatever that brought to you. Try area58.net or area58.tv and you will see our beautiful new website. So we are reconvening after having a joint meeting with the school committee. And at this point, we will be shortly discussing and taking votes on annual town meeting warrant articles. So what we will take up now is that we considered the governance committee recommendations at our last meeting. We voted on some, but not on all. So the first, item number one of recommendation by the governance committee was recommendation of the adoption of a BOS policy requiring quarterly meetings among designated representatives of the town and school side so as to foster discussion and cooperation. This was discussed at the, what we refer to as the informal meeting between the school committee and the board of selectmen. And I believe that the sense was that it's not necessary to adopt this formally because the town administrator and the superintendent schools are already holding regular meetings. And it is the intent to get together with the chairs and other members of the boards periodically to continue the conversation. So I think this was initially proposed because there was considered to be some level of disconnect, and I think that's been addressed. So what's the pleasure of the board on number one?
Mr. Chairman, in reviewing after our discussion with the school committee, I make a motion that we do not accept this recommendation from the governance committee.
I second that motion.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to also point out for the public that we, as a board, are meeting with the school committee as well.
Yes.
On pretty much a quarterly basis anyway. So it's kind of unnecessary, you know, recommendation.
It's proven to be a little bit of overkill.
Right.
Okay. There's no further discussion. Those in favor of not requiring the quarterly meetings, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Number two.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on, should we let the people at home know why we're short two members tonight?
Well, I don't know if Helen wants people to know that she's in the Dominican Republic.
Well, didn't you have to tell her where, just that she's on vacation?
Too late now.
Well, that's why I asked. But yeah, Helen is vacationing in the Dominican Republic. We attempted to have her participate remotely, but she chose not to. No, actually, I don't think we actually gave that serious consideration. And Mr. Ward unfortunately is down with a bad cold.
Yep.
So that leaves the best of the board, as we're often referred to.
Or the rest of the board.
Or the rest of the board. And remember, let's make Carver great again. So number two is a recommendation that all health insurance costs be moved into a single townwide health insurance budget line item. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, based on the feedback that we received from the school committee and the consensus that they took amongst their members, I'm going to, at this time for this year, move that we do not adopt this recommendation.
I second the motion that we not adopt this recommendation.
Further discussion?
Again, as I talked about, you know, just enters the full disclosure to the public at home, I was not, you know, I'm in favor of doing it combined. We've had two auditors now, and the D.O.R. recommended. However, the school committee, I will respect their wishes. They're not comfortable with it yet, and this is really something that even though the Board of Selectmen has the right to go ahead and do it unilaterally if we wanted to, I don't think that's in any way to go ahead and foster a good working relationship with another elected body of the town. I would much rather have, you know, a full concurrence between both boards, so that's why for this year, let it go as is. It'll give us more time to discuss it. It'll give the new superintendent a chance to get more fully into his role, and I am very much in favor of that. So that's why I made the motion that I made.
All right. Any further discussion?
Well, I concur. I think it shows some respect for our fellow board members.
No further discussion. Those in favor of not adopting government committee recommendation number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
And Mr. Chairman, because of that, I don't believe we need number three, which is basically it's a recommendation to create a stabilization account for mid-year health insurance costs.
Even though it may not be done in the same scale, I think there may be an intent to adopt it.
And I ask that we wait until we get back the town administrator back in for a further clarification then.
Okay. So we'll table three for now. All right. Number four, recommendation of the creation of a finance department consolidating functions of the offices of treasurer, tax collector, the town accountant, and the assessor.
Oh, I'm just looking to see if we've had dealt with that. I'm looking at the minutes.
You don't have number four?
Actually, we already voted on that.
Did we?
Yeah, I wrote all my votes down.
Yes, we approved number four by a four to one vote.
That's correct.
Looking at what's in my packet.
It's in your agenda, your minute of the last meeting, which you do have, I believe.
Okay, let me find the governance committee hearings. Discussion.
And we took no action on items number nine and 10.
Nine, 10, and 11, I think it was.
Oh, you're right. Number 11 also no action.
All right, I'll defer to you guys. What's the next number that we need to deal with?
Number nine, which is...
Recommendation the police department begin to carry Narcan as soon as possible as the opiate crisis.
No, I think last, at our last meeting, the town administrator recommended that we take no action, period.
Right.
Because it was a question of...
Because it was collective bargaining.
Correct.
Okay.
Same with 10 and 11, wasn't it?
That's correct.
Okay, so 9, 10, and 11, we're gonna...
We're just not gonna...
So we're not dealing with those.
We're all set with this.
Right. So that takes care of the governance committee recommendations.
Did table in them or it's already been decided?
No, it's no...
Those who decided not to take no action on 9, 10, and 11.
So it's take no action, which is very different.
Yeah, it's more definitive than just a table.
Did we do anything with 12? The recommendation that the Board of Selectmen pass a resolution in support of a change of the Board of Health regulation pertaining to the purchasing of age of tobacco and tobacco-related products from 18 to 20 years.
Oh, yeah, we voted on that, and I believe it was a four to one vote with...
Oh, Helen.
Selectmen, yeah, Helen voting against that.
All right. So have we done everything with the governance committee this morning?
See, my mind is not totally shot yet.
Is that the last meeting that you voted at?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. We're vamping a little bit here because we're waiting for changes in the...
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that since the administrator's not back, we jump to the Board of Selectmen update, I guess.
All right. Mr. Dunham, you're up.
I'm not gonna help you out on the timing here because just once we get, actually, yeah, once we get the articles all voted on, I want to remind the public that everything is going to be on the town website so that you can, everybody will have a chance to go over this, and it'll be a complete package. Also, what'll be on the town website is what you see every year with town meeting is what individual line cost item is on the municipal side, how much is going, being spent by the selectmen's office, the treasurer, the assessor's office. All those will be broken down, and they'll be available. So I ask that the public go through, you know, it's really assigning you a little bit of homework to do, to go ahead and take a look at the town website. You'll be able to go through all this stuff, so you'll be able to go ahead and if you have a que, you know, it'll help you formulate any questions or concerns you have to bring before the rest of the town meeting on town meeting day. And that's it.
Ms. Hewin?
Hewins.
Hewins, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just giving you a hard time, Ron. I'd like to request that we see the budgets for, say, I don't know, the last five years previous to this as well, just so people can have a comparison.
Post online, the budgets for the last five years?
On the website. It shouldn't be that hard. I mean, they're all in a computer somewhere, so.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be hard.
It's really good to have comparisons, I think.
Carrie, you'll make sure that we pass that recommendation on.
Thank you. And I would agree with that because it'll also give the residents a chance to see that we're actually doing a good job trying to control costs instead of letting it go spiraling out of control. So, of course, now we can let the town administrator know what we've asked him to do, what we're gonna ask him to do.
Okay, we'll go to my selectmen updates. First of all, a reminder, April 30th, Saturday, April 30th, we're sort of having a soft opening for the Area 58 studio, which is located right next to Cornerstones in North Carver in the, what was the Blockbuster Plaza, but of course Blockbuster is not there anymore. So that we'd invite everyone between, I think, 10 and 2 to stop by and see what we're about. Also, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but the intention will be, we had the budget essentially done of a month prior to town meeting, subject to a couple of minor variations. And the intent next year is also to have all these articles done, also a month ahead of time. You know, this has been a work in progress. Town, I think Ducksbury has the earliest town meeting. They had theirs in mid-March. And we're earlier, but not the earliest. And some other towns needs to be coming up, but the concern always was that if we waited, then maybe that the state would come up with another couple of million dollars for us that we could spend in June, but that never seemed to happen. So it's just a matter of moving things forward, and we discussed this actually with the schools that, you know, everyone needs to adapt to sort of, it's almost as if as soon as we pass town meeting, you know, it's time to stop planning for the following year. So...
Could I interrupt you? Could you tell us again the date for the opening of the Cable TV station?
It's a soft open house, Saturday, April 30th.
Thank you.
10 to 2. The selectmen will be meeting again on Tuesday, April 5th, which is our regularly scheduled first of the first Tuesday of the month meeting. Then we'll be getting together again on the 11th at town meeting. So everyone remember, town meeting is at 6:30 or 7?
7:00 P.M.
7:00 P.M. On Monday, April 11th.
Correct.
The follow night, the selectmen will be getting together in executive session, reviewing the evaluation for the town administrator. And then we'll be getting together for the third, Monday of the month, which is our regularly scheduled meeting, Mr. Ward's last meeting. And at that time, we will be announcing the results of the evaluation of the town administrator. So that's what we have coming up. Mr. Town Administrator, we have been vamping here as much as we can to pass time. Are you in a position to present us with the updated warrants?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, before he does that, do we want to now attack item number three from the governance committee?
Oh, yeah, the one thing we left was whether or not there's still a wisdom in creating a stabilization account for mid-year health insurance cost overages, even though in the current year it would not include the schools. Isn't it a good idea to have perhaps a smaller, sort of establish the revolving fund or the contingency fund, and then it could be adapted later if it's gonna take on more budget?
Yes and no.
Does that require you to adjust the...
I've already adjusted the budget, so.
The warrant again?
Yes, I've already done it. So let me explain what I've done is, since we were unable to look at having a townwide system, what I've done is just taken that component and rolled it into the stabilization fund, meaning that this is not gonna create a problem prior to the next annual town meeting. We're gonna park it, those funds, in the general stabilization fund. At the next annual town meeting, we can choose to pull some of that money out and create that fund, or find some other way to create that fund, depending upon what happens over the next year. But between now and the next annual town meeting, there'll be no emergency to require that.
All right, so probably then we should...
I would suggest you just table that right now for further analysis over the next six months.
Year.
Year, even better.
Chairman, I move we go ahead and table that item for the next at least six months.
Second?
Shouldn't we be taking no action?
Well, no action means that we're doing...
We might reconsider it in six months.
In six months. I reason I'm doing it this way.
Okay, second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye, those opposed, the ayes have it. I'll be using my best Billy Bulger here tonight.
Thank you.
For those of you that go back to Billy Bulger. Very few people in the audience, I think, know who I'm talking about, so.
Oh, but I'm not in the audience.
Yeah, you're not in the audience, and you're not young, so.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Town Administrator update. Anything you want to give us tonight?
Love to go through the warrant.
Well, we're gonna come back to that. Right now, this is your chance for the update. I'm hoping that you're gonna forget everything you had.
I hope Mr. Ward recovers quickly from his illness and can join us shortly for his last couple meetings.
And that Helen's having a good time at Dominican Republic.
I am sure she is.
Sarah said I shouldn't have said that, but I did. All right, so we can check off the town administrator update. That's gotta be a world record, short one.
No, the last one's is short too.
Okay, let's go to the vote on remaining annual town meeting warrant articles.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, there's been a couple slight revisions to the warrant. Let's see, but I'm gonna start going through it in order. We've already approved Article 1, you've approved Article 2. Article 2 was approved by the Finance Committee 6 to 0 since your last meeting. Article 3 for unpaid bills, you did approve that 5 to 0. The Finance Committee approved that 0 to 6.
You mean approved or disapproved?
I'm sorry, disapproved.
Was there a rationale for that?
They just would encourage all departments to make sure they get their bills submitted in time.
But they did recognize that this is a lot lower than it normally is. So we're heading in the right direction.
They're heading in the right direction, and it was more of a statement of principle. However, they are supportive of it being paid.
Okay.
But just as a recognition...
The unpaid bills from previous years was $1,776.68.
Correct, which is a relatively extremely low amount.
Yes.
Okay, Article 4. Article 4, this has been filled out from your last meeting. This was, you did table this at the last meeting. We do have about $120,000, $29,000 worth of snow and ice overages this year, primarily due to the multiple salt runs we had to make early in the year and for some of the equipment. What you see here is requesting town meeting to reallocate, in essence, $120,000 worth of expenses from different line items.
So with a very modest year, we still exceeded the, what was snow and ice budget for this year?
It's 200,000.
We increased it, right?
No, it goes into effect for, in this budget, we're increasing it $35,000. So for 2016, it was $200,000. Keep in mind, last winter, we spent close to $700,000.
Right.
You know, here, we're gonna be 338, 329,000, so.
So I mean, I know the number we've always plugged in has been, you know, short almost every year.
Correct.
But normally, we've held, we dealt with that by having it removed from the cherry sheet. The last couple of years, we've been trying to deal with it the way we're doing it here by finding funds so that our cherry sheet doesn't get docked when it comes in.
Correct. And it follows our policies as we're required in our financial policies to pay this year's expenses with this year's money. Don't push it off to next year because it just makes next year's budget harder.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board on Article 4?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept Article 4 as written.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Article 5, allocation of funds from free cash.
Yes, I'm gonna just talk about some changes that have occurred since our last meeting. And predominantly, there's two. One is I've included $25,000 in, for an allocation of free cash, to allow the superintendent and I to use that for any additional consulting services we may need over the next year as we explore, looking at what some long-term solutions are for maintaining our facilities. So again, that'll give us $25,000 to bring in external help should we need that. So that was added. I mentioned that before, but I didn't have a dollar amount. And then the other item is where it was proposed to set up, item number three that you just mentioned, that you just tabled, in a mid-year stabilization fund, so to speak, for health benefits. Since we did not combine the facilities, I'm sorry, the healthcare for the town, what I'm proposing is we just roll that into the general stabilization fund, and should we need to look at that in the future at the next annual town meeting, that would still give us ample time to address that. But it provides the opportunity for those funds to be parked there. And then finally, at the request of the board, there, we talked about splitting this article up, and then it was determined to just put a note in the recommendations, which you see on the second page. And Sarah, I just want to make sure that that's satisfactory to you, that you are not supportive of the human resource funding item.
While that fact is correct, I did mention last time that I thought specifically for the public in the past years, except for the past two years, we, these have all been separate articles on the town meeting warrant. And so I was suggesting that they either be separate articles or that they be listed as A through G so that people could discuss them separately. I just think it's just a lot of, each one doesn't, it's just a lot of stuff there. And, you know, I think they deserve separate discussions. And what if someone's against one of them but for the other six or however many? I mean, so I did make that suggestion last time. I don't, apparently, that's not what happened, so I may be in a minority on that, but that's my feeling.
So on the bundling of the articles, this is what multiple towns are doing, is combining the articles in the essence of trying not to have town meeting go for multiple nights.
I understand, but lots of towns may be doing it, but in the history of Carver, this has only been happening for the past two years.
That is correct.
And it's very, very difficult for me to follow. And I'm sure I'm not the only one.
It has been happening in the last two years, you are correct. And the moderator does have the ability and does give people the ability, should the vote of town meeting go to break these up, that's the will of town meeting, and they have the right to do that. So if that's what the town meeting wants to do, they certainly can break any one of these articles up into as many components as they want.
So if somebody comes to the floor, town meeting says, "Mr. Moderator, I'd like to break these, you know, I'd like to take the North Carver Water District enterprise run out separately." Town meeting is allowed to do that, discuss it, vote that one item, and then continue on with the rest of the bundling if they so choose.
That is correct.
Okay, I'm just saying that so that everyone's perfectly clear out there that we're not trying to infringe on the citizen's right to go ahead and debate these different light items.
So I guess the question still remains, though. I mean, and you've made a note that I'm not supporting one of them. So how does someone who's not supporting one of them vote on them if they're all bundled? I mean, do you vote against all of them, or you can't vote for all of them because you're against one of them? So you see my, see the...
Well, then you would make the point that you'd rather vote for that one separately.
All right.
And then it would have to be at the town meeting to go along with that.
Okay.
What's the pleasure of the board on Article 5?
Mr. Chairman, I go ahead and make a motion that we adopt Article 5 as written.
I would like to separate the line item, the two-year development of a human resource department and associated training staff.
Well, no, I think you would do that on town meeting floor, not here.
Well, I'd like to do it here as well.
Okay, well, you can make the motion.
I just said.
Okay. Is there a second? No second. I guess through the rule of necessity, the chair will second Helen's motion.
Instead of mine? Is that...
Yeah, there were no seconds for yours.
And there were no seconds for his?
Well, I just seconded his.
Okay.
Normally, the chair doesn't second, but since we're down to three people, the rule of necessity kicks in, and the chair has to do a second, so. Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
It carries two to one. Article 6, solar payment in lieu of tax agreements. We did not vote for this yet.
I believe this one was still undergoing legal wording?
Yeah.
I could be wrong.
I'm gonna just ask you to take no action on this right now. I'm gonna leave it on here, and there may be a high likelihood we table this at town meeting. Where I put in here, it's high, it is likely the article be tabled.
Do you mean withdrawn? You don't table articles at a town meeting. You either deal with them or you go ahead and you...
Withdraw them.
Withdraw them.
Yep.
So we need a motion to table this article for now.
I'll move that we table this Article 6 for now.
I can second that. Is there anything you can tell us about why?
There may be something coming, and I don't want to have to wait another year for, to come back to town meeting if there's another solar project that's percolating.
Oh, I was just afraid if we didn't pass this now, we wouldn't, you know, the state may take some action that would prevent us from...
Oh, no, 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 it's nothing like that. It's historically what we've done in the past is, I usually list out, and we've passed many solar projects, many of these, this is a recurring article. And normally, I list those out by properties. Right now, I'm still just pending one more property coming, or a property coming in this year, so.
Not adopting this doesn't inhibit us from being able to...
No, doesn't impact us at all, no. Everything we have is fine.
Well, so Maiden seconded to table, and possibly on Tuesday night, you can tell us what the plan will be, whether to maintain or withdraw?
That's correct.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Article 6 is tabled. Okay. Article 7?
Article 7, the ink's still drying on this one. And in the previous version of this, we had a shared benefits account, which I believe was a little over $7 million. I have, since the earlier meeting today, I've broken that out and put that back into the school and into the town budget. So what you see here is the town's budget is broken down by the multiple different categories you see here. There's seven categories. And then there's one line item for the school of $22.267, $318.
Under B, you're, but you're still listing shared budget benefits, health, retirement, life. Is that just shared budget benefits for the town, municipal side?
That is correct. It's exclusively for the town.
Could you...
Well, it's under general government budget versus school budget.
Okay.
So I think that's where the breakdown is.
And then there's been nothing, actually, I shouldn't say that, there's been a couple dollar amounts that have been changed, but nothing of substance from the last time you reviewed it. And again, this is the same format that we've had for the last couple of years. We did go through each motion the other day, and the Finance Committee voted in favor of motions A, B, and C, or parts A, B, and C. And they tabled part D, waiting just for a slight revision in the dollar amount for North Carver Water District. I believe it was $312,000, and ended up being $322,000.
So we have the accurate number.
You have the accurate number, that is correct.
Okay. Michael, the, under public safety, that's both fire and police, right?
Fire, police, and EMS.
And EMS, okay. And this gets a little bit to what Sarah was getting at, at the, on the previous article we were discussing. You are going to have available for people at town meeting and also online, complete breakdown of how much of the, like, the 3,253,000 is going to police, how much is going into fire, how much is going to EMS. And so breaking out all the different categories on the municipal side so they know where that money is going to.
Yes, all those breakouts will be in Appendix E, as they've been for the last two years. I will say that I have to have Meg go back and do some modifications after today, but it will all equal these dollar amounts.
And that will be on, posted on the town website.
The entire warrant packet we posted on there, and this is Appendix E in that warrant booklet.
That'll be available physically to anyone that attends town meeting.
That is correct.
But also, but the reason why I'm getting that is so people can go, you know, remember, I'd signed homework for people to go ahead and go to the town website to go ahead, and this is part of the package you really need to look at, so you can go ahead and make good this is part of the package you really need to look at, so you can go ahead and make good decisions on how you want to vote on your tax dollars being spent.
And while you were away, Michael, we made the decision that we would try to post the budgets from the last five years online as well for people to review, so they can follow some of the changes that may have taken place over the last five years, and Carrie assured us that that would take place. All right, so we have two motions relating to, well, actually, we have three, four motions.
Four motions, yep.
To Article 7.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask that part A be, as I did at our last meeting, that part A be split into two parts, so that it's clear when we're voting for or against the town, the new townwide organizational chart versus the wage and salary scale, wage classification scale?
In other words, make it like an A1 and an A2?
Yeah, that was actually what I wrote down.
And I think, you know, given, given your passion over that, which, it's fine, I think that's, that's a fairly easy change to do.
And I do understand that the wage and classification plan is based on the chart, so it may seem silly to vote against the chart, but to vote on the wage and classification, but my, I'm making a point here is that I'm not against paying people what they're worth if, if the chart gets adopted.
Well, that's why I'm agreeing with it, we, you know, we could go ahead and make that simple change.
So how do you want to make the first motion, then?
I move that we approve part A with the exception that we now have an A1, approve amendments to townwide organizational chart FY '17, and an A2, FY '17 wage and scale, yada, yada, yada.
All right, so you're making that, you're suggesting that before the warrant be published, that it be broken out like that?
Right, it'd be a part A1 and an A2.
Correct.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Can I just ask, is that for town meeting, or is that just for you guys taking your individual vote right now?
No, I think, I believe Ms. Hewens, you can correct me if you're wrong, she'd like that for town meeting.
I would.
Go back to the typewriter.
Yeah?
And again, as, as Ms. Hewens mentioned...
You still don't get it right, that's okay, I'll teach you later.
Hewens, mentioned.
Sarah.
I'm just Sarah, that's all right.
It's, it's almost, it's tough to vote for one and not the other, or vote for one and the, well, I don't know, anyway, is there a motion made to second further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, then who wants to make part A1 motion?
I thought I just did, but that's all right.
Well, no, you broke it up, but...
We just, we just voted on breaking them into A1 and A2.
Oh, okay, I make a motion, we approve A1, which will read, approve amendments to townwide organization chart for FY '17.
There a second? You can second for the purpose of discussion.
Well...
Or not.
Yeah, or not.
I'll kick in the rule of necessity and second the motion. Further discussion?
Do you have a problem with that? I mean, I thought this was a way to get through what you wanted.
Yeah, no, correct.
But she wants to vote, she wants to vote against the organizational chart.
Oh, I get you.
Yeah, so I'm not going to second the motion.
All right.
Anyway, move on.
Well, you could, it's sort of like signing papers.
I have no further discussion on that.
Again, it's very clear to everyone that this committee does not have any discussions prior to our meetings.
We do it on the fly, live and in person.
We're trying to make Carver great again. So, motion made and seconded, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it, two to one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve part A2, FY '17 wage and scale pay, scale and wage and classification for elected non-union employees for FY '17.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries three zero.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve all of part B as presented in the warrant.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept part C of Article 7 as presented in the town warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. You want to try this one, Sarah?
Yes, I, I move...
Now, he's getting one out.
You approved C before, so you don't have to do that one, you got to do D.
We already, we just approved C again.
We approved C twice.
Yeah.
Well, I was on a roll.
We feel that strongly about C that we wanted to approve it twice.
I move that we approve part D of Article 7.
I'll second.
And that's Enterprise Funds, North Carver Water District, and Cranberry Village.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Article 8, the capital improvements budget. It's the pleasure of the board.
We still haven't heard anything from the fire department on the grant yet.
Pending.
Okay, so with that being the case, I, we have to go with $20,000.
I mean, it could change at town meeting floor.
Or it could, it could change actually after town meeting, before we hit June, July 1st.
The issue is, is you vote it, and if we get the grant, we're just not going to spend it.
Right.
You don't have to change the article at all, just, we just don't spend it.
But it would just be nice if we could have just gotten rid of it to begin with, but...
I move that we, did you move this?
No.
Okay, so I move that we recommend Article 8, the capital improvement budget.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Article 8 passes, three zero. Article 9, community preservation committee report and recommendations.
We already voted that one.
We voted that one, all right.
And I see the finance committee approved that six zero. Just so the public knows.
Approved Article 10. 11, you received a, oh, wait a minute, 11, 11 you have...
That was three parts again, right?
Part C you tabled. You approved A and B, C you tabled. The finance committee voted six to zero on A and B, and they tabled C, and the governance committee voted five to zero on A, five to zero on B, and for C, they voted three to zero. Part C is the affordable, the method for the mechanism of counting affordable housing units within the town of Carver. I do not want to leave anyone with any false sense of optimism that this legislation will pass the State House, and I say that from the standpoint that I have had conversations with both our state rep and our state senator, our state senator, our state rep has sponsored several articles like this for the, similar to this for other towns, our state senator has also passed a statewide bill that's still pending to have all manufactured homes within the Commonwealth, so that 50% of those will be accounted towards affordable housing, hence the 40B regulations. We did try to approach this differently, this is unique, no one has ever taken the approach that we put together here, basically, in a nutshell, is Carver has the distinct privilege of being number one within the Commonwealth for having 1,115 manufactured homes, according to our assessors' records, and again, that is the number one spot in the Commonwealth for the number of manufactured homes in any one community. Carver also has the distinction of being number one as well for the number, for the percentage of households that are made up of manufactured homes, which is, I believe, 25.6% based upon the assessors' records. So based upon those two items, we in no other community can compare to Carver by having those two items even close to the order magnitude we have, that one could reasonably assume that we exceed the state requirement of having 10% affordable housing in a community. Now, the state defines that affordable housing, it has to be deed restricted, and there's a couple other requirements for that. Clearly, the manufactured homes are not deed restricted, and they therefore don't meet the technical legal definition, but in practicality, in the spirit of the 40B law, they do meet that intent. So based upon Carver's anomalies of being number one in both categories, this bill asks the legislature to count 50% of our manufactured homes as affordable, which would then allow the town to meet its 10% obligation, and therefore not have any other proposed 40B projects come to the town that are forced upon the town.
So we're not even going to be asking for the full load, we're just taking half of the manufactured homes?
Correct, because, you know, that's, that's, if we're 25%, this puts us at 12 and a half percent, which is still greater than that, and there are many other homes in the town that would qualify based upon the state's requirement, but again, they don't meet the legal definition for having deed restrictions and so forth.
You asked us to hold off on this the last time when we discussed it, because legal was still going through it. Are town council done making any changes they need to make, so we can go ahead and take the action?
Yes, this is the revision that substantially completes what the legal has put in here, so they have done that.
So we can take the action tonight?
You can take the action tonight. I also want to emphasize that, that one of the issues that we have to deal with is that cities in, where we have larger blocks of elected officials, they are generally opposed to legislations like this, this is how these things have died in the past, because there's some concern, well, if, if these other suburban communities aren't going to do it, then it's going to force more projects into the city, and then that's where you have your voting bloc, so to speak. So again, I don't want to leave anyone with the belief that this has a, a very significant chance of passing, I'm trying to tame expectations, I'm trying not to have any expectations on this.
But it's worth a shot.
But it does, you know, the, I know that there's been some concerns with the selectmen on this, and particularly from the standpoint that Carver is an agricultural community, and you do not, you're trying to avoid any dense type of housing that may potentially impact the water supply, which, you know, cranberries need and other farming things need, so therefore, this is an attempt to do what you possibly can do, because as it relates to the 40B projects, you really have no standing, that's all up to the ZBA, where they act on behalf of the town.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, Michael, I, I want to make sure for the public who lives in the manufactured homes, that, I want to assure them that this is not in any way going to, it's not going to affect their homes, it's not going to do anything negative, I just...
It's not going to affect their property taxes or anything like that.
Or anything, I mean, that's not happening.
No, the, I understand that you want to provide...
Well, I mean, if the, if the state were to adopt this, I want to...
Yeah, this, no way affects their, their standing, right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept part C as written in the warrant.
I second that.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Article 12, the senior and veterans tax workoff program, we have already approved.
Yep.
Article 13, I believe we tabled that pending hearing from the planning board, I believe the planning board has sent their recommendations, which were both favorable for their articles. What's the pleasure of board on Article 13?
Mr. Chairman, I really move that we don't take any action on it, because we don't, yes, they voted for it three zero, but we still haven't gotten a explanation for, from the planning board, what the need is for this, and so, it's not, it's not one of those articles we have to take any action on, we can't if we want, but, you know, without having the rationale from the planning board as to why they're bringing it forward, I would just soon take no action. So that's my motion.
Sarah, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, thank you. Well, we did get a memo from Marlene McCollum, the planning director, and she said that, basically, these standards, let's see, how does this go, the rules and regulations are cross-referenced in the Carver zoning bylaw, and they're in Carver's subdivision rules and regulations, but by specifically including the performance standards in the zoning bylaw, the planning board and zoning board of appeals are clearly authorized to require conformance as part of a special permit or site plan review. This amendment will increase certainty for the applicant by better defining the requirements, and will ensure that the boards are better able to protect the public interest. So I think it's, it's just putting it in all the possible places that it should be, that's how I'm reading this, but I see your point as well, I don't have a problem not, you know, taking no action either.
Sure, the zoning articles the selectmen really don't have to take a position on unless you think it's a significant, a significant issue that you want to put your weight behind it, so tabling these or having no vote on these is perfectly acceptable.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, I don't, no, my motion is for no action.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I'm handing you copies of the, last page of the warrant to sign, and we're going to have to trust the staff to make sure that the warrant that we're signing represents everything we've agreed to tonight. Article 14, non-petition money articles.
This is also...
Non-money petition articles, sorry.
Yes, this is also a petitioned article for rezoning. The, the finance committee did vote six to zero on this, because they did feel that this rezoning, this parcel that's next to Zero Soul Circle, near the Plimpton Line, it would be beneficial for the town to potentially generate some additional tax revenue, because it's part of a state, a mass DOT project.
Does, how does the board feel on 14?
Either way, I don't see a problem with, with recommending it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Article 15, money petition articles.
You've already voted it, you're done.
We already voted this, sorry.
That's it, yep.
Okay.
So now you need to vote to accept the warrant and publicize the warrant.
Someone want to make a motion to accept the warrant?
To any last-minute legal comments that may come in tonight or tomorrow morning.
So moved.
Want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. That's our warrant for 2016.
And it will be posted as quick as we can through the town website.
Let's go to our, were there any topics that were not reasonably anticipated 48, by the chairman, 48 hours in advance, that the chairman's unaware of?
Only if the chairman has something that the town administrator is not aware of.
That's the chairman.
Can we, the chairman is, the chairman's never home. The minutes of March 23rd, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move we accept the minutes of March 23rd.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, is there an executive session need tonight, Mr. Town Administrator?
There is not.
All right, before we ask him for a motion to adjourn, just a reminder that we have an election coming up on Saturday, April 23rd.
Mr. Chairman, I regret to do this to you, but in our packet, we did have something in Carver Town Meeting Procedures, were we supposed to do something with this tonight?
No, that's just there for informational purposes, that will be in the, that's always the first page of our warrant packet that goes out.
Just wanted to make sure.
Again, we have an election coming up on Saturday, April 23rd, we have two people contesting for one seat on the Board of Selectmen, and three people contesting for two seats on the school committee, so please make sure you turn out and vote. I believe there's a debate coming up, this coming Tuesday night, April 5th, on Area 58 TV.
Is that being broadcast live, by the way?
I think that they're usually taped.
I think this is going to be taped, because it's going to be at the studio, and I don't believe we have the ability to go live from the studio at this time, and any candidates that haven't heard of that should perhaps get in touch with Area 58 to make sure of what the circumstances are, since I see some carverless looks. Mr. Town Administrator, is there anything else before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Yes, there is, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to just quickly go back over the town meeting procedures. These are essentially what was done last year, however, there have been a few modifications that have been made. The governance committee did vote in favor of this, as well as the town moderator has been involved in, in putting these together. Again, these, in essence, are under the town moderator's jurisdiction. I want to point out just a couple things, this ends up being the procedures for conducting town meeting. There are a couple modifications that were made in here, one is that without first obtaining the approval of the moderator, no person shall speak more than once on any article, and no person shall speak more than three minutes at any time, except to correct a mistake or misstatement, and then for no more than one minute after being recognized by the moderator. So in essence, everyone is allowed to speak three minutes on an article, and then after that, it's one minute, and it, and again, that's at the discretion of the town moderator to help move things along. That being said, is that the moderator is also authorized to recognize anyone from a border committee, speaking on behalf of the border committee, and presenting any articles that they may have, because sometimes, as we know, our, our fire chief, who we love and admire, sometimes needs some extra time to share all of his thoughts with us.
You singled out the chief?
He does a good job, always has a nice PowerPoint presentation.
He does defend himself, that's why.
Was there anything else?
Yes, there's a couple other components in here, and again, the other thing is the moderator, as part of these policies, in an effort to avoid unnecessary delays at town meeting, it is strongly recommended that any proposed motions or amendments be given to the moderator prior to the start of the meeting, preferred 72 hours in advance to the town clerk, so it can be reviewed with town council to make sure it is in proper legal form and within the scope of advertised warrant article. So again, it's a request just to encourage better, better respecting of people's time at town meeting. Those are in essence the two major changes that are in there, and that will be at the beginning of the town meeting warrant.
On that, if they could get it in 72 hours prior, would you be notifying that in, the individual, if it's deemed that it's not within the scope, so they can go ahead and rewrite it again, so they can present it to the town clerk at town, before town meeting?
We would try to get as much feedback to them as reasonably possible.
Okay, that's, just want to make sure. Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Further discussion? Anyone? Allen?
Oh, why are you singling me out?
There being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.